Well, good afternoon and welcome everyone to the Santa Barbara County Board of Education Board Meeting, and I hereby call this meeting to order. Happy New Year, everybody. I hope it's happy. Today, we're not going to have a live interpretation for live streaming, but I'm sorry, for live in person. Thank you. I was missing those words. But they are doing an interpretation next door that you can hear on the streaming and also will be available for anyone watching the recording in Spanish. So we've got that covered. And Mr. Bruce, would you like to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance?
You bet. And as we start the new year, let us, whether it be staff or board or supporting characters, we pledge ourselves to a great year of work in serving those who are so hurt.
My Pledge of Allegiance is that by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
I was afraid Joe was gonna get his head.
That's a bad start to the year.
Okay, and now Anna, a roll call, please.
Okay, it looks like Mrs. Cardy is absent, so Mrs. DeWort. Ms. Irman.
Here.
Mrs. Flores.
Here.
Mr. Howell.
Here.
Mr. Porter.
And present.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm not aware of any changes to our agenda today, so we'll go right into the President and Board comments. I just hope that this year is better than last year. What can I say? I really don't have much else to add for the first of the year. Anyone else have? Nadra? Joe? Bruce?
Yeah.
Michelle, I have one. Okay.
This morning, I attended with Superintendent Salsedo the Santa Barbara County School Boards Association meeting. It was my first meeting in person with the group, and it was fairly well-attended. And just some of the issues that came up from district school board members, they talked about mental health, the budget workshop that's coming up hosted by Capital Advisors. They discussed workforce housing, enrollment, and absenteeism and parents' rights. Did I cover it all? Okay, thank you.
I really appreciate those updates, Michelle, for those of us that aren't able to attend for one reason or another. So thank you very much. Okay, public comments. Do we have any public comments today? No, we do not. So moving right along to the Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon and Happy New Year to our County Board of Education and to our team here. A very, very Happy New Year and so great to see you all. Today, January 4th, boy, it's the month of School Board Recognition Month. And so want to say thank you to each of you for your service and your leadership throughout Santa Barbara County. You're five members of 5,000 board members throughout California, the largest elected body in California. Just a really tremendous body of supporters with incredible responsibilities for children and teachers and staff throughout our state. So want to say with appreciation, thank you, each of you. A few announcements. There are some invitations in my report. There's three different events. The first one, the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce has invited me and educators and business members once again to present the state of education. That is an invitation to you. As Mrs. DeWort has just mentioned, the January Governor's Budget Perspectives Workshop. And there is an online, free online workshops available if a person couldn't attend in person. And then our Employee Service Awards, Recognizing Longevity with our Employees, is happening online, decoupled from a board meeting this time again, but we'll give you more details as the date approaches. But really excited to celebrate our incredible employees at SB CEO. Along with those announcements, wanted to share with you, I had sent a memo to the board about a potential expulsion appeal in February. It is now not happening. So the family has, I will say, the family has toured Fitzgerald Community School, the school that we operate, and has decided that it might be a really great match for their child. And so that's where they'll be attending. So that is not happening this February, as far as we know. Wanted to also say, one other piece that we talked about as a future agenda item for the School Boards Association is a spring annual dinner. And the group usually huddles together, the School Boards Association members from around the county, and talk about potential speakers. Usually, it's a dinner. It's been at the Red Barn in San Ynez proper for the last couple of years, and we've had different speakers attend. This year, we are going to extend an invitation to two individuals to speak together. Dr. Kevin Walters, the President and CEO of Allen Hancock College, and Erica Endrogonis, Dr. Endrogonis from SBCC. So hopefully, they'll be able to attend and speak. The date has not yet been set, but it looks to be in April and likely at the Red Barn again. And then I will say that since our last meeting, we had an announcement from Andrew Schwab, Superintendent from San Ynez Valley Union High School District Superintendent, who has, who will be moving on to a different district in March. So we do know that by the end of this year, we now have two announcements for Superintendents. Diana Galinda Royball, Superintendent for Goleta, who's retiring to Colorado, and Andrew Schwab. So let me see if there are any questions that has arisen from the report to the board. All right, then I'll pass it on to you. Thank you.
Okay, we now have the consent agenda, please. I included their minutes.
Thank you. I'll just hand it over. The consent agenda, which includes our minutes, registration of credentials and other certificates, declaration of surplus, and issuance of high school graduation diploma. Any comments on any of those before we make a motion? All right, then may I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Michelle. Second? I'll second. Thank you, Nadra. All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The motion passes. Then we have our usual information items, which are the Personnel Report and the Williams Uniform Complaints Quarterly Report. Are there any comments, questions on those items? If not, we'll zip right ahead to item 15, our provisional appointment of trustee area number seven. And we are going to review and consider the actions related to the provisional appointment process, review the applications received to fill the vacancy, and we'll select candidates to interview at our special meeting a week from today in Santa Maria. So Dr. Salsedo, is there anything you would like to start with on that?
Maybe a suggestion to start with the two applications received, and if we could solidify the details, to the extent we can, for next Thursday in Santa Maria, that would be really helpful.
And if everyone would take a look at the two application. Now, as I understand, there were four that we received, and two were ineligible.
That's correct.
Okay, so these are the two that were reviewed and qualified and eligible for the position?
That's right. And just so to ease the, if there's any worry or concern from our board, all four went forward to elections. Just to double-check, it just wasn't based on our addresses or our maps, but they did double-check and ensure that the two ineligible were because of the trustee area that they were not in. On top of that one was also a school district employee for a high school. So it was kind of a double eligibility there, and that these two do reside in the trustee area. So we are set.
So that's taken care of.
Mm-hmm.
So we have Mrs. Flores as one applicant. Anyone have comments or questions about her application or her comments, her responses to the review items, or her, I'll call it, her resume that she submitted?
We'll just say, I looked at it again. I was impressed with the education experience. That's relevant to me, but look forward to exploring that, as well as other things in the live interviews.
Would anyone want to move that we include Mrs. Flores in our interviews next week?
So move.
I'll second.
Any comments? If not, all those favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and the second eligible applicant is Mrs. Lopez. And any comments or points that anyone would like to make about her application or resume? Do I hear a motion to include her in our interviews next week?
I will send you.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to include Mrs. Lopez in our interviews next week. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I think we have our candidates interviewing. And some of the details that we need to work out for that.
So one of the details is a start time for the interviews. We have two interviews now scheduled that we will be scheduling for Thursday. A proposed start time, we did not give any time certens to any of the applicants, but we did let the two who did not qualify know that they didn't qualify. Thank them very much. And we let the other two who did qualify, let them know that the board would be meeting today, and we'd get back to them after today. We discussed, the board discussed a start time of approximately 10 o'clock on Thursday in Santa Maria. And one, I'll just, for starters, it could be a 10 o'clock board meeting start with some of the beginning matter that you'd like to handle, then an interview's beginning right away. Till, usually, last time, it took about 20, 25 minutes, so I think 10 to 10:30. You could start the second one at 10:40 with deliberations after that and selection. The thinking, just as a reminder from last time, was to ascertain from the candidates that should they be offered the position, that they would take it so that there wouldn't be a need for a subsequent meeting to then appoint the trustee. So it could be something like a 10 o'clock start time with an interview starting, the first person coming right at the beginning of 10 o'clock, like an individual around 10:40, if that seems to serve the needs of the board.
Beyond that, I know we penciled in both dates, assuming a large number of applicants and the need for many interviews. It seems to me now, just for planning purposes, if we can assume with two candidates and starting at about 10:00 AM, adequate time for iteration, action. I don't know if the lunch hour is an issue or not. It can be easily dealt with. But is it safe to assume that the application or the interview deliberation and decision process will all be accomplished on Friday, so that Friday is, we can free up Friday for our calendar?
That will be our goal. And barring anything unforeseen, I expect that that's what would happen. But then there's always surprises. All right. 402, yeah, it's under adjournment. The only thing that wasn't there was the time. It's on item number 18. And the only thing that, as I said.
It's the North County Office, right?
Yes, that's correct. And if you're coming up the freeway, if you do get off at Main Street, you can come straight across to Blosser and then down Blosser to Farnell. But there's another turn, Cook, and then Farnell. But coming across Main Street, it's from one side of the town to the other. So it's a long ways, once you get off the freeway, and many signals. So just don't think that you can, you know, get on the off-ramp at five minutes to 10. You will not make it.
That's right.
So give yourself plenty of time to transport yourself across the entire city of Santa Maria on Main Street, which is appropriate, because that is the main street. And then our other item today is that we wanted to review the provisional appointment process, including additional language about community college employees that was on the board's application or the application for the position. And I wanted to begin a discussion, and here are some comments, pros, cons. What looked good? What did you then wish we'd done differently? And while it's still fresh in our mind, let's make some notes for next time. So any?
And I'm sure I have the resources for the discussion.
Good, go for it.
But before I go into it, can I solidify and just close the loop on a few things on the last of item A? So what we'll do is, or what I'll do, is after today's board meeting, we'll contact the candidates and ask them to select, you know, make, get them the two slots. I can't see, we've already expressed the times, the dates. Hopefully, they'll do everything they can to make that, but maybe what I'll do is absolutely aim for that 10 o'clock period and a 10:40 period, but should there need to be some local room, I'll work with the morning period, is what I'll do. So if that's all right with you, I'll work with the morning before noon and get that in. So I'll communicate back with you on that. And we, let me check with Anna. Have we given them the interview questions yet? Okay, so then what we'll do is we'll send them the interview questions, because that is what we did last time. I just want to make sure that we're going in the same process as we did. They were already public, made public. We've shared them with the board, moved them forwards. Go ahead and send those questions on to the candidates as well. I think that's it. I think that's it in terms of concluding.
And as the interim head of the Governance Committee, I asked Mr. Howell to be our chair of the interview process that day. Is that acceptable?
All right.
I know we have materials with the interview questions, but it'd be helpful. Is it in the packet?
Why don't we make sure to send the questions once again to the board members in advance?
Okay. I know, I think it'd be helpful just, I know I've seen them. I know we've reviewed them. But for everyone, and thinking back to the process, we can consider this, and then we could get confirmation from this Irman that in fact, it's the way it happened. But did we, you know, Maggie chaired, do we? Did we, not alternate, but various ones of us asked the interview question? We did, Maggie, if I'm correct, he did not ask all the questions. So we rotated in terms of who the questioner was. And then otherwise, that we asked the question, there's not a time limit as such. I just wanted to be sure we're all on the same page. Most answers can be, certainly, most questions can be easily answered in a couple of minutes. Certainly, for the first interview, our time limitation is not going over for the second interview, but there really is not, I think we have ample time.
Yes.
The total is, there's seven questions?
I believe six or seven questions.
Yeah. So the process is just very organic. We ask the questions, they have a chance for a follow-up. We have the second interview, then we have our deliberation and open session.
And when we talk to them from the time, please make sure they know we end time as well, so that when we start asking them questions, they know that we're planning on only talking to them for a half hour. Otherwise, they may think they can go on, so.
Will do.
Will do. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Yes, Mr. Porter?
Same way, just a little. Was public comment before questioning the interview process, or was it after the interview process? If there is.
Let me think.
It was, it was before, because I remember knowing one of, one of the person who spoke on behalf of one of the candidates is somebody I happened to know. So the public, yeah, the public comment came before.
Great, thank you.
I remember this was a question we were going to ask if the board member that is, or the potential candidate that's not being interviewed, to step outside. Did we ask them to step outside? So.
Well, the second one has to step outside. I mean, hopefully, they wouldn't show up until.
It's an open board meeting, so anyone can, may be there. But what we had was, we had a reception area for the person who was waiting. Yeah, and so we had a, we had a reception area, but the meeting is open, so an individual could be there.
With multiple candidates, it was a little, perhaps a bigger challenge. I think what we said was, this is an open meeting. You legally have a right to be present for the meeting. Our request, and it's no longer a request, is that we respect, I guess it's the privacy, the candidate who was here, and we will ask that same candidate to respect your privacy and not be, so that each of you is present individually alone before the board when you're interviewed. If somebody folds their arms and says, "I'm not moving," it will be so noted.
That will be noted.
One other thing, I think, you know, we all sit on boards, nonprofit or for-profit, often, certainly in the nonprofit area, often there's recruiting process for candidates, and someone proudly says, "I'm promoting Bob Smith for the board. I know him well." I think that serves the candidate well, and people can vouch for a particular candidate. In other cases, there's a whole range of prior relationships. I think it's important for each of the candidates, for the board, if any one of us has a relationship with a candidate, it may in fact be a real positive to say, "I can vouch for candidate A or candidate B." But we all be aware of that, just so we're all kind of transparency, we're all on the same page in terms of knowing who knows a particular candidate and their relationship with it.
I would like to state the record that, being that I'm from Santa Maria and it's relatively tight community, I have, I'm unaware that I've ever even met either of these candidates. Even though they've been education and been in the community, I'm not aware that our paths have crossed at any time. So I'll just state that. Okay. Of course.
I also don't have any, I haven't met any of the candidates either. I did want to go back to how the interview process went in terms of the candidates being in the room during the interview. So my recollection of the interview was for me similar to what Superintendent Salsedo mentioned, is that there was a space outside of the room that we were having the interview, and that's where all of the board, or the candidates were prior to their interview. And then after the interview, thank you, and then there was an exit. So there was, I don't remember saying, "Oh, you can stay, if you're legally, you know, able to stay if you want to, but you, you know, we'd like to respect the confidentiality." It was just more inferred, like, okay, your interview is over. This is, you know, here's the exit. We'll contact you after. So that might be another way that we can handle that. And then if we have to have the disclosure that they can be there, then we can, but make it more informal.
Are we using the large room where we normally meet up there?
Yes, the plan right now is use the boardroom there.
Because that one whole wall is glass, so if they come from the outside, they can see in.
We'll make sure that there's a person who's receiving.
Think about, you know, whether that door is open for that, or if they have to come around to the hall, then it's easy to have them wait.
I know. But thank you.
That's a good point, Nadra. Thank you for sharing that with us. Did any other thought come to mind about your process?
None that I can think of. Yeah, no, just, I think, I think we handled everything. The only that came to mind is if we have any questions about their responses, but that can just happen in the flow of the interview process. And yeah.
Perfect. Very good. Something, just give me a second. I'm sorry, I forgot. Must not have been important. Okay, that's it for item A, and now for item B. Do we have, I would love to hear and engage in any comments or recommendations we have. And Dr. Salsedo, you indicated you had some information to share with us about that.
Yeah, I do. Thank you very much. So, so since the board met in December, and boy, there were so many considerations and actions that the board took so that this process, the provisional appointment process, could take place. One of the board's actions, again, amongst many, and reflected in your minutes, but I want to, I want to use this to frame what I'd like to share with you. So one of the board's motions and then actions had to do with the application itself, the very applications that are in your board books. And there were, along with shifting the language from the 2022 application that was used as a basis for the conversation, along with shifting everything to trustee area seven, naturally, there were three other changes that the board approved that we, and we were to make it, it was a Friday meeting, to make it on a Monday and make the application window occur. So the three changes were to include community colleges on the application. In other words, excluding community college employees from the process. So that was, one, to include that language. Two, to include language about disclosures or conflict of interest. We didn't have the names for it, but that's, that's what we were calling disclosures or conflict of interest. And three, to ensure that the provisional appointment dates, that November 2024, was really clear for the applicant. So those three items were spoken. Judy, you provided the motion in reviewing the video. You provided the motion, and it was left kind of open-ended that way. Joe provided a second, and it was unanimously approved. So with that, we modified the application and posted that application. And, and I want to say that Michelle DeWort has brought forward some concerns about the application, and this is where I want to make sure that the full board knows about concerns and the details. And so I have some materials to that to share with you. First item that I'd like to share with you is the application itself, and then the modified application after, after Michelle brought forward the concern. So what you're going to see are two versions of applications, and Anna's going to pass them out now. So I'm going to wait until everybody has application that's on white paper and an application on vanilla. The tab color. So that's one that's coming through in, on white paper, and then here's another that's coming on vanilla. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I think everybody has now the white. So if you'll take the ones that are on white paper, you will see three tabs. The color of the tab doesn't matter. And on page two, you'll see the first tab shows the change to the language. It says in parentheses, it says any member of their staff comma or any employee of a school district parentheses, including a community college. So including college. And it goes on. So that was to include community college employees in that language. Tab number two is pointed at the timeline so that the provisional appointee serves until November 2024. And tab number three on the last page speaks to the conflict of interest shift that the board approved. So that was what was posted. And the dates of the posting is on your version in red on the front. So from Monday to Monday. And in between that time, board member Duward expressed concern that the wording related to the community college employee, just it needed further clarification. And so I will show you on vanilla. That's in the kind of the yellowish. It's the only change is now also tabbed where you'll see that there was an asterisk included after including community college to say a community college district employees considered employee of a school district under the ed code based on the opinion of legal counsel. Okay, so that was what was modified. And then you'll see the dates of the modification from Monday to Thursday there. So wanted to share that with you first. And then Michelle had asked if I would share would be willing would be. I was glad to share some of the communication that she sent to Austin and Craig, Judy, myself and Joe to begin with. And then you'll see some correspondence there. And then there's some subsequent. I have a few messages. I didn't send get all of the messages, but the 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 major ones. So if I may, I will share the first message that Michelle sent out. And that one, you'll get a clipped packet. And it's in blue. Anna, that send that one out. And again, I'll pause on that one. Just want to give you all the resources before the board has conversation. Yeah, thank you. So in this packet, as you receive it, the message from Michelle expressing her concern is in blue. And then Austin's response and then Judy's response is clipped to it. So why don't I give you 45 seconds or so to peruse Michelle's email and the responses? So essentially, you'll see Michelle's concern in the blue sheet. You'll see Austin's clarification, which then you saw on the application. And then Judy, your response as well. And then one other communication I'd like to share. And then and then we'd like to open it up and make sure that you get a chance to discuss if we're ready. This one is a subsequent message from Michelle to Judy with a few requests within it. And Judy, your response. So that's really well, we'll leave that one. So it's coming out in pink. Thank you. Thank you. So why don't we take another 30 seconds? You can see Michelle's email in pink and then the response from Judy. Recognizing that it's difficult to receive and read and process all at the same time. I, you know, I just wanted to share those, I think, main emails and responses at this point. And then, Madam Chair, those were some of the resource I thought would be helpful to articulate some of the concerns Michelle had and the conversations that happened that 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 the to the board. We thought it would be better to have the conversation with the full board rather than back and forth in between just a few board members. So with that, I'll turn it over for you to Chair.
And the other piece to that was that our board policy indicates, and we actually carried as one of the questions on the interview, that this board operates as a collective group, not as individuals. So my recommendation, my course of action was that as a board, we talk about it and then decide what action we want to take or do not want to take. That it be a collective decision, not just a one off. And I also just like to mention that Mr. Howell was copied on Mr. Ward's first email on the 15th and on Austin's reply to Mr. Ward on the 15th, but was not copied on any subsequent communications. Nor had I had any contact with him or any other board member during this time that we developed this strategy for discussing it today. So would you like to start?
Sure. Thank you.
I said, thank you, Dr. Salsido, for preparing all this, all these documents. And I was hoping that the 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 applications would have been included in the packet. But I'm glad they're here in the packet. Both both applications, the the first version and the second.
Oh, please.
In the board package.
Only the applications that.
Yes, okay. Okay. So I prepared a document for the board. And I just want to say that we, as a board, should expect the highest standard from any law firm that represents this board. It's my understanding that as lawyers, Griffith Thornburg has an obligation to avoid misstating the law. According to the State Bar of California, under rules of professional conduct, 4.1 Truthfulness and Statements to Others, approved by the Supreme Court in 2018. The rule states, in the course of representing a client, a lawyer shall not knowingly make a false statement or material fact or law to a third person. Some of you may now, now you know that you have seen been aware of this. It may not have been aware of this original version until today. But but I believe that our lawyers, the final changes after our December 8th meeting falsely created an impression that community college employees are statutorily ineligible to serve. And this application was on our website and part of the press release. Griffith Thornburg added language to ed code 1006 with no annotation or citation that the added language was county council's opinion, which is so brazen or sloppy, in my opinion. Superintendent Salsido made copies of this erroneous application, and it should have been in the board packet. At December 8th board meeting, our county council received board direction to amend the application. If board member Howell or I were unclear in our direction, then council should have asked for clarification. At our board meeting, board member Howell requested transparency and that the vacancy application should be amended to include language reflecting Griffith Griffith Thornburg's opinion that community college employees are ineligible and will be excluded from consideration to fill the vacancy to avoid what happened last year or that that last provisional appointment. Thus, taking away the opportunity for hundreds of people who work at Allen Hancock Community College to participate in the provisional appointment process. As we know, Education Code 1006 does not in fact name community college employees as ineligible to serve. Because of this statute or law, I made it clear to council and the board that any language our lawyer decided to add to the eligibility information on the application should be identifiable as separate and distinct from the ed code as an opinion. Our lawyer communicated his comfort with his own council board. Once I noticed our law firm's egregious error on the application on the website, I emailed all of the people on these emails. A few days later, the application was thankfully corrected, but quietly, with no notification to the board or the public midway through the application process. I asked for the county office or Griffith Thornburg to publicly notice the update to the application. And this never happened. And I believe we were not being transparent. The actions of Griffith Thornburg. One, the disregard for the direction of the board. Number two, making false impressions on a public document misleading the public. And three, no public notification of the updated application, in my opinion, reflects the firm's lack of accountability, transparency, credibility and integrity. Leads me to have no confidence in Griffith Thornburg in the future as county council or the county board of education. We, as a board, should expect our lawyers to be held to the highest standard. And that concludes, and I have a motion after if someone wants to make a statement.
Not sure where to begin. I received the first email that you sent. And I I stayed up for a long time. I couldn't go to sleep with all of the responses that I planned to send you. Many of them very snarky. I didn't send any of them. I am delighted that you didn't send me the second email because I'm not sure I could have shown the same restraint. I think you're totally. You you use terms like egregiously. Egregious, disregarding the motion. It was either my motion or second, I can't remember. I think what council did was within the spirit and the intent of what we asked. It was by way of clarification. I think what really truly offends me is you're citing the Business and Professions Code alleging misstating the law. I think I am a lawyer. I'm proud to be a lawyer. I think we have very high standards. One of the things that is easy to do is is to make allegations about a lawyer's integrity. You've done it before on this board. It offended me then. It offends me now. I think there are nuances. I think I think you I think there are a number of things you just don't understand. Or perhaps you do understand. And they're feeding an agenda that I don't know. So I welcome your motion. It may or may not get a second. I will argue against the motion as strongly as any motion I've seen before this board in the last two plus decades. And this is this is not the first time that you've challenged council openly in a meeting, challenged council. Didn't like the result. I don't know if this is one more bite at the apple. But I think your concern is misguided. You're independently acting as a single board member without acknowledgement or approval of other board members, much less majority. You you're a single board member. That's all you are. That's all any one of us is. We have no independent ability to do. We act as a board. So I'm really pleased. I wish we weren't doing this, but I applaud the superintendent in giving us lots of paper so that we can very carefully go through the sequence. I I will leave it at that. But I, in the strongest person strongest possible terms, reject your premise and think it's inappropriate that we've gotten this far.
We don't have the motion yet to actually discuss the motion. But I think it is appropriate at this time to comment on what we've seen. And if we have any questions on that, to clarify it before we hear the motion and then actually discuss the pros and cons of the motion.
I'm not sure I totally understand the allegation. So, I mean, we asked for this to be in there and it is in there. So what was the timing between the white sheet and the yellow sheet and our board meeting? Both of these were after the board meeting, was that right? Okay.
Correct. The board meeting was December 8th, Friday. And the white application, the white paper, Monday, the 11th, so immediately following.
Okay.
And then it was therefore through the following Monday. And then this one in vanilla was posted subsequently on that Monday morning or after midday through the end of the application process.
Okay. And what triggered the change in the verbiage from the white copy to the yellow copy?
Michelle writing to Judy and Austin and myself and Joe. And the reason we we normally, we wouldn't change an application mid course if it changed what the board had acted upon. But since the board had acted upon what what the board was approving was to include language that any applicant reading it know that a community college employee was included in the in the interpretation. So the clarification in vanilla didn't modify what the board approved. So we made that that modification.
Okay. So if I may, may I address county council, Madam President?
Yes. Thank you, Brett.
Yeah, so you you gave us an opinion about school board or of employees of community colleges. I assume there were, there was either legislation or attorney general's opinions or or decisions that informed your opinion. Could you give us just a really short, not lawyerly rundown of what informed your your opinion?
Right. This this opinion came out last year when we went through this process and actually had two applicants from the Santa Barbara Community College District who applied for that vacancy. And at the time, the the clue was whether or not a community college employee fell under that provision in Education Code, section 1006, which would essentially disqualify them because they were an employee of a school district within the jurisdiction of the county board. So the question becomes, is a community college district a public school district under that section of the code? It's not defined in the code. Can read that section of the Education Code and just say, okay, well, a public school district, that's referring to K-12. But that would be making a pretty big leap. That's the kind of thing that gets you flunked out of your first semester of law school. So what you look at is there any case law? Has a judge or a court interpreted this one way or another? There's not for that provision. So you look at whether attorney general opinions exist. And there are plenty of attorney general opinions that say things like community college board members cannot also sit on the county board simultaneously. That section of the Education Code, it comes from what's called the doctrine of incompatible offices. That's common law doctrine. So it basically parries with it all of the common law that comes in that compatible offices doctrine. So what that common law says So, what that common law says is that that section was meant to take the doctrine of incompatible offices and expand it from board members to include employees. So, the idea is that if you are a community college member and that person is disqualified, and the Education Code is to expand it from board members to employees, and that's basically what it did, and all these Attorney General opinions basically say that, then those employees are also going to be disqualified. That's, that's the reasoning we provided, I don't know, like a five-page memo last year about it. We cited to all the Attorney General opinions, and that's it. So, to kind of go back through what happened at the December meeting, I think you asked if there had been any more clarity or anything new that had come out. There hasn't been anything new. That's still our opinion based on the law, based on the Attorney General opinions. And that's what I recommended. I, Mr. Howell suggested that we include something on the application this year, so we weren't in a position to tell applicants that they were actually ineligible, even though they spent their time submitting an application. After that, Ms. Ward asked me twice whether I was comfortable having it listed as an opinion, and I answered her twice that I was comfortable with that. I did not take that as a direction, and I've watched it maybe four or five times since then to see if I misunderstood something. Clearly, I did because she disagreed with my actions. So, I understand that now. I didn't, as a direction at the time, I took her question literally, and I told her I was comfortable with the opinion. So, that's what I acted, that's what, that's what my actions were based on. And I don't see it in any way as a breach of my professional responsibilities. That is a, that is a massive thing to accuse an attorney of. It's a huge, it's, it's big enough that it's actually a violation within the Ethics Code to accuse someone of violating the ed code in a lot of contexts. So, you know, that, anyone who questions my integrity, that's, that's a huge deal. I take my job very seriously. I try and find out the law and give it to you guys in a concise way that you can understand it and make decisions. I think two different times in the meeting, I, I pointed out that this decision wasn't up to me. It's your application, it's, it's your appointment. So, that's why we modified the application after Ms. Ward expressed her opinions about it, and, and that's it. So, not to ramble on, but, but that's, you know, my perspective on what happened here.
May I follow up? So, in version one, where we didn't have the asterisk, you felt comfortable with the way it was based on that settled law, for all intents and purposes?
Yes. Yeah, that is my best interpretation of the law. And it's not just me, you know, we talk about this a lot, we debate it. We brought in people from the Attorney General's Opinions Unit to make sure that we were analyzed correctly, they agree with us as well. So, I emptied out my toolbox in trying to get you the right answer.
Okay, and typically, on an application, we wouldn't list 20 citations on where it came from or how we're just applied in doing it. Even though a lot of those might be law, AG decisions, legal counsel opinions, but they're all considered settled, it's just the way it is. So, for somebody that got version one, is there any substantial difference with version two in terms of clarity or correct decisive, decision correct, whatever I'm trying to say?
I don't see a difference. I can tell you that all the decisions about how to word that part of the application, that, that were before I left this boardroom on December 8th. There was no discussions after that, there were no emails after that. It was made because I didn't, I didn't take Ms. Ward's statements as direction, and I thought it would make the application. Now, obviously, that was not the correct way to do it, based on her email.
No, I'm, 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 thank you.
I will disagree with counsel in an odd way. I don't think you misunderstood it. I, I know, I have not gone back to review the transcript for the video. My, my big concern was full disclosure. I want everyone applying for the position to be aware that this is a very unique situation in a couple of ways. Number one, they have a very short term, they have to run in November, they have to run again. That's something that I could easily see a number of candidates just saying, I can't commit to that. So, that's, in fairness, full disclosure. The second full disclosure, it, it was a unique circumstance with, I think, two city college, one adjunct professor, one to be full-time professor at City College who were in the applicant pool in 2022. It was a nuance we'd never considered because it, it had never come up. So, I personally, my view was, I want to be sure that someone in the community college district not likely assume, oh, this is great, put a lot of effort into it only to be blindsided. So, to me, again, transparency, full disclosure. I want applicants to not be disappointed because if they had known something, they wouldn't have made the effort. I think the nuance of whether we're acting on opinion of counsel is, is superfluous. We don't, there are many things we do, we don't have chapter and verse and citations on various actions. It's, it's the reality of the world. In business, in life, you get advice of capable advisors, capable of counsel. If it's a legal issue, then you go forward. You don't put an asterisk, everything saying, I'm doing this, but it's on a, it's based on opinion of counsel. So, I, my disagreement is to Mr. Payne, I don't think you misunderstood it. I think it is clear, as evidenced by Mr. Ward's actions, that's what she thought. I'll give her the benefit of the doubt and say, that's what she thought about at the meeting. I don't know that. She clearly thought about it later and said, oh, that's not at all what I meant. And we jumped through hoops to make the change. As Mr. Porter indicated, there is no material difference, there is no meaningful difference between the two documents other than satisfying what I think was an inappropriate concern of Ms. Ward. That's, I, I hope she's satisfied with number two. I, maybe she wanted it publicized, et cetera. But acting individually as an individual director, she raised an issue, it was addressed, that was more than was necessary, it doesn't matter, it's happened. So, that's my position at the December meeting. It continues to be my position now that we did the thing in giving all candidates full disclosure, full stop.
First of all, Mr. Howell, the fact that you are annoyed with me, or what was the word? That, that's really irrelevant and inappropriate to address a board member that way. I have my opinion, and it is my opinion, and I believe this is a very black-and-white issue for me, that misstating the law, when you have ed code and you have language in ed code, and to insert your own opinion into ed code, I think that is egregious. And, and so, it's, it's my opinion, and, and that you are super annoyed is irrelevant. But I, and I, what was I supposed to do? When I see a public document that misrepresented what I had specifically asked in a board meeting, and I didn't change my, because I looked at the tape as well. I, I specifically wanted it to be delineated that this was an opinion of the county council. I speak because I talk to a lot of county board members. I interface with county board members throughout the state, and many of them have community college employees that sit on their boards, and they're great people, and I know these people personally. And they are still astounded that our board, that the Santa Barbara County is, is as acting in this way, and that, and we are listening to one opinion of one attorney. And I, so, this is where I'm coming from, and so, this is, this is, these are, this is my experience. So, and I think that what we're doing is we are eliminating, we're excluding hundreds of people from Santa Barbara C. College and Allen Hancock College from participating in this election process, and I think this is election interference personally. And I think that this is not, not citing, that you're adding language to a statutory or to a law, I think is just, is inexcusable, and that's why I, I sent it to an email. And I don't think I'm acting individually. I, I, I am, I'm an elected person, I'm one of seven, I know. But as a, as an elected officer, I feel like this was something that was important because it was a public document, and we were interfering with this whole provision, provisional process. So, that's why I, I, that's why I sent the emails, and that's why I'm glad that the change was made, but I think that we fell short in not alerting the public that we were making an update. So, I think that wasn't transparent at all. And so, you accusing me that I've got some sort of agenda? No, this is, I'm just working off of the facts that we've had with today, and there were some other issues in the past, and these Attorney General opinions, I don't want to rehash them, but it's specifically, one of the opinions, I encourage you to go back and read them. One of the opinions specifically does not say, it says that it's, that its community college board members are ineligible, but not employees. It says that in the opinion. So, I just, so, for once and for all, I think we should get an Attorney General opinion. Let's, let's solve this. So, Santa Barbara County is the only county in the 58 states that has this provision. And I think that we're going to ruin it for the state is not a good reason for us not to, to seek an Attorney General opinion in my opinion.
Nadra? Thank you. Thank you, with member toward for that, those thoughts. This correspondence, your opinion, you know, is part of this discourse. However, personally, it does feel a little redundant because we have been here before, and allegations, I can, I can see your, your thought process on maybe not agreeing with Attorney General, but to then say that these, what happened was unethical and questioning the integrity of our legal counsel, it feels very egregious for what you're, what I believe you're in goal, based on what you're saying, is trying to accomplish. There was no specific directive. We left that meeting feeling like we were all in agreement. And so, it does feel a little like we're being blindsided. We're using a lot of time and energy and resources to discuss and hash out something that we already agreed upon. There was no question about city college employees not being eligible for this position in that meeting, right? So, like, for us to come back now and to open this up all again, it, it, it doesn't sit well. And I, I, I'm not, that's, that's not an objective, and that's not, you know, it's not very eloquent, but it, and, and to, and in addition to that, to accuse people of their integrity, I know that I would be very upset if my integrity was put on the line because of something that, in essence, doesn't really change the communication that people are receiving. It sounds like your, your issue is that we are not allowing people that are in city college employees to apply. That does, that's, that's completely different than hashing out what was put on the application or accusing someone's integrity. So, if that, if that's something that we feel like we need to begin as board, then let's talk about that, but that, this seems like a waste of time in terms of what it, what I believe you're, you're trying to do for the end goal. And going back to the fact that we are a board that comprises of seven members, or six, to be seven members, you are one person. And we already went through this, and we already, as a board, decided how we want it to move forward. So, I can understand if you have your opinion and you disagree, but at what point do we start, do you let it go and move forward as a collective with the board? Or maybe not, maybe you, you're saying, okay, until the board does what I want as one board member, I'm going to keep bringing this up. You know what I'm saying? So, I guess I, I, it feels a little disingenuous because we're going through all of this, but at the end of the day, it's really just about you wanting us as a board to be able to allow city, city college employees as applicants, right? That's what you want, and that's what this is about.
That, it's twofold. It's that, the eligibility issue, but it's also the actions of our, of our, of our lawyer.
And, and for me, it feels very like a gotcha moment. And I just have to say, like, we have too many gotcha moments in this world right now. We're so politicized, it's like, you did this wrong, you did this wrong. Like, we don't need to put people's integrity on the line. If you don't like something, you don't like something, but you don't have to put people's integrity on the line. You don't have to call them out for something that you don't agree with. There, again, I, I'm surprised because I really felt like we were all in agreement left the meeting. And if you were so intent on making sure that this language was put in here in a certain way, you should have been more clear in the meeting before we agreed on everything.
I looked at the recording a couple of times, and I remembered, I asked him if he's comfortable inserting this language as opinion. How could I be more clear that he didn't put an asterisk? All he needed to do was asterisk that it was an opinion.
That's a question, timeout, timeout. We have in front of us an application where it is specified that this is the opinion of legal counsel. The issue was about community college employees being eligible or not. As Nadra so eloquently said, that decision by this board had been decided as a collective before. There is nothing between the first version without the asterisk and the second version with the asterisk, except the words "legal opinion." But to the applicant, the result, the outcome is exactly the same. So, not one single applicant was turned away for misinformation. The information they got in the first version and the second were exactly the same, with the exception of saying, this is legal counsel. Now, in regards to our legal counsel, we pay him, the firm, I should say, not Aston directly, but, but we hire that firm to, I'm going to say this very crassly, keep us out of trouble by researching the legality of issues that come before us and giving us a legal opinion. That's what they get paid for. Then it's up to us as a collective board to say, yes, that's what we want to do, or no, we're willing to take the risk. This was decided two years ago, that we did not want to take the risk of a different interpretation. So, I would like to have that be settled. And if you want to reopen the discussion on making that decision that we made two years ago, revisiting it, that, to me, is a separate topic. It's not the application, it's the board decision that was made before and re, and, and I just personally want to say, I have no reservations about the legal opinions that we get from our legal counsel, and I have no problem with the way they and I have no problem with the way they present them or the pros and cons of each side. In fact, I remember at the time, you said, since there isn't any specific case, you could go ahead and do it, but you might be opening yourself up for a case because sooner or later, somebody's going to challenge it, and then you're going to be in trouble. Well, that isn't worth the battle for me. I'm not willing to die on that field. So we made that decision. So why don't you proceed with your motion and?
Nadra, I just wanted to correct. I think my, my whole objective here was I did not want to, in this meeting, relitigate the eligibility issue and talk about AG opinions, but it did come up. So I, I, and, you know, and that question was asked of Austin by Mr. Porter. But, so the issue really here is about the actions of our, of our legal counsel. And I see that, you know, the board doesn't agree, and that's fine. We can agree to disagree that, 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 you don't find fault in, in a lawyer misstating the law. That's, that's your, that's your opinion? So I'm just going to, I stick by?
No, my opinion, and each one of us can speak for ourselves, do not misrepresent my opinion. My opinion is not that legal counsel, this was, this, what was the word you used? Mistaken the law. That is not my position at all. I'm, I'm taking the legal opinion and accepting it.
I'm, I'm talking about the actual putting in language into the law without annotating or putting an asterisk at its opinion. So that, that's my issue.
But he did.
After.
The application did. That was corrected. That was done, even though it was one board member directioned elect to legal counsel, which I can have a whole nother discussion about that. So.
Okay.
Okay. Nothing more. Any other comments?
I just want to say one more thing. I think it's really important for us to distinguish opinion and fact. It's your opinion about legal counsel's ruling our decision. That is not to Judy's point, that is not our, that's not how we feel about it. So it's, it's, it feels a little disingenuous for you to say like, oh, you agree with our legal counsel misstating the law. It just, it doesn't, it doesn't feel collaborative. It doesn't feel like, we, we are here as, as a team to, to make, to make improvement, to, to do good. But if we are feeling like we have to watch our backs and we don't trust each other, it hinders our ability to do that. And these actions chip away at that trust and that collaborative spirit that we are trying to create here.
So I, I can tell you, Nadra, that this is not a gotcha moment, and this is just some, this is something that struck me when I saw the application. It, it just struck me very black and white that we had this issue, and that, and that's my opinion. And I don't think that, I'm not acting collaboratively. If I, if I see something that I think is, my moral compass tells me that this is wrong, I will, and I teach my children this, you speak up. So I spoke up.
I would just ask that maybe next time, if this is something that you feel so strongly about, instead of framing it as a question, you make it a directive, or if you can, directive, but you, it's a statement of this is how I view this, and this is how this, the wording should be on this document. And then that can help to lessen any kind of misunderstanding or feelings that people are acting in a way that's unethical.
And, and that kind of communication should go to Dr. Celcedo and myself. And Dr. Celcedo would have responded and taken care of the issue, and it would have, none of this, we wouldn't have had to go through any of this. And yet, the objective that you had, that the legal counsel, the asterisk is their opinion, would have been accomplished. So I think my biggest concern, that would be a good way to use it, is that this had to become such a big deal, that this had to become something that I had to live with over the entire Christmas holiday. And that's just me, I know, but this was no way to be spending my birthday talking about legal code and, you know, opinions and defending legal counsel and Merry Christmas to you. I mean, it was, it was just unnecessary. And I think that's what I'm reacting to more than anything else. I'm not, I have no problem with you having an opinion. I have no problem with you disagreeing. But you might consider, oh, it could best be received and end up being productive instead of this, destructive, I guess you could say. So you would not make a motion then?
Well, if, if I may.
Of course.
I'm doing this on my wife's birthday, so that's kind of like what you're doing. So I, I respectfully disagree with where you got to as you got through all this process, but I do appreciate you bringing this to the full board so that we could have this discussion again because that's what we do. We discuss things around the table. But we need to do that without questioning this, I would hope, or trying to think somebody has some sort of agenda. I don't think that's helpful. So I think all the way around the table, it's good for all of us to include me to kind of address the facts as we see them, and then to collegially come to a decision, which I think we did two years ago on this whole community college thing, which is why I respectfully disagree with you. But let's just, let's, let's all enjoy being on the board together. And we, because we, this, this agreement not lead to disrespect.
Exactly. We need to continue respecting each other and each other's opinions.
Yeah, so that's.
That's really, so it's, it's the message that you deliver it that really makes this work or not work. So, well said, Chris. Happy birthday, Mrs. Porter. All right. Is there any other business before the board today? Were you going to send out the questions again, Susan, for next week? Okay, and maybe a map of how to get there and all of that stuff? So. Oh, that the applications are, but.
But aren't the questions?
No, they were, no.
I'll, I'll need to confirm with the full board the times that, you know, the times that the applicants or candidates have agreed upon, and we'll give you the schedule, the map, the questions. Make sure that you have those in advance as well as the applicants as well.
Great. Yep. Okay. Then I need a motion to adjourn if you're ready. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And discussion, carrying none?
Let the record reflect, Mr. Ward, and I agreed on this motion.
It's a start. Thank you.
As we do 99% of our stuff.
Oh, we didn't, I didn't ask for them.
You said it.
Yeah, I said it, but we didn't talk about it. If we have future, oh, then, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
I wanted to recommend that we draft a mission statement for the County Board of Education.
Sorry. I wanted to recommend that we draft a mission statement for the County Board of Education and post it on the website, and that we read our mission statement before every board meeting and committee meet to remind us that what we're about, that we're about the child, and we should be, that should be the focus of what we do. And, second one, I forgot about this one. And vote on a representative for the Santa Barbara County School Boards Association. We could put that on the agenda as well.
We're hard to train. Oh, my gosh, we are so hard to train. In regards to the mission statement, I think perhaps that's something I would like input from staff on. I don't, I would rather we not sit here and try to create something on our own. Give us some direction, and then we can go from there. But, you know, we can also discuss whether we want to do that or not. We shouldn't assume it. Okay, then, okay. We have action items for the future meeting, and we have a motion and a second to adjourn. And if there's further discussion, carrying none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're out of here. Thank you very much, everybody.